I'd like to call this meeting back to order. We are on item number nine, superintendent's report. Dr. Markley?
All right, two quick things. One, it is school counselor week, so if you got a, if you know a counselor, hug your counselor. That is the unheralded job of the district. They do some amazing work, working with students. They do a lot of behind the scenes, quiet work in dealing with our students who have some, some home issues, personal issues, but it is National School Counselor Week, so please, find your counselor, give him a hug. Second, just to correct a couple of things. Winter Park is not an F school. Snipes is not an F school. Freeman is not an F school. To keep calling them that, I think really undermines the work that those teachers have done to move those schools forward. There is still a lot of tremendous work to be done, but I just wanted to publicly let folks know what those school grades are. That's it.
Can I ask a question, Dr. Markley?
Yes.
When you go on the website and you see the, the letter grades for the schools, it doesn't reflect the last one.
The state is-
When are they going to update that?
Well, as much as we all love DPI, they're gonna finally update those grades this month. Am I correct? I think it finally-
Yes, the report cards will be released, I think, on the seventh or either the eighth of February.
But I'm saying, for instance, when we talk about Holly Shelter.
Yep.
It's a B school, but it says it's a C school on the website.
I think they're updating this week or next year.
Yeah. What happens is, is we do our test, we know what the school results are gonna be, but then the state has to issue their state report card, which goes on the website, and you can't, and that's what you have to use to update that. And they are, I mean, it is literally January, we're halfway through this school year, and they're releasing the data now, which doesn't make any sense.
Maybe we should put a disclaimer there.
We can do that. It's even gonna happen again this year because we're redoing math standards. So those math standards, students won't have math scores until they re-norm, until they norm those scores, so we're gonna be delayed again into the fall. And, and, and that's the problem with using a letter grade to define what's happening at a school. That, that letter can sometimes becomes what that person sees at once, and that's what they always associate with that school. That is not the school. I saw a great quote by somebody today. "We don't define our students by a score." Why do we define our schools by a score? Our students are individuals. Each of our schools and teachers are doing some great work. Now, we got a lot of work to do and a long way to go, but just simply to try to use one letter to define a school is, is simply wrong.
Absolutely.
Look, can I just add to that? I mean, just from, just for the public record, I don't thi- I mean, me personally, I don't see a grade. When you walk into Williston, when you walk into Sunset, when you walk into some of our lower graded schools, they're, I mean, they're my favorite schools, and they are not in any way, shape, or form reflected by a silly letter. I don't see 'em that way. I don't think this board sees 'em that way. There is no such thing as a school that is failing. They're all good schools. Go talk to some of these parents, go talk to some of these teachers, go talk to some of these students. They're all great schools.
I agree.
Any other?
No, that's it.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, thank you. Moving on to item number 10, consensus items. Item number A, personnel, appendix F. Dr. Welmers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Request the board approve the personnel matters as presented.
All right, you have had a chance to review item, or sorry, appendix F. Do I hear a motion to approve?
No move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Thank you, Mr. Dr. Welmers. Item number B, budget amendment number five, appendix G. Mary Hazel Small?
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I request the board's approval of amendment number five as presented.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve, oh, sorry, wait, my screen's bugging out. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve appendix number G, the budget amendment number five? Hello?
No move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. All right, thank you, Ms. Small. Moving on to item number 11, all business, redistricting next steps. Mr. Bowyer?
Yeah, in light of the Williston proposal, which is sort of thrown around and everything, the idea originally was to maybe look at doing it a little bit faster. Since that is not happening, since there was some changes on the board, we really didn't have much of an opportunity as new board members to look at those maps and sort of, you know, bring the, the changes that we thought were necessary to them. I've proposed, and I'm asking the board to consider just tabling the redistricting process through this year. I would like to keep our schools as they are for the 2019, 2020 schools and express to the public that redistricting is going to happen. It's, it's happening. I just don't think it's fair to go back and forth and then all of a sudden, you know, after the Williston thing couldn't happen as fast, say, well, we're, we're moving you again. So I would just ask that the board vote on that.
All right, so let's take a, let's move for approval and then we'll, we'll discuss. So do I, so you obviously are making the motion?
Yes.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so now I'll open it for discussion.
Where, I mean, we got room for all the kids where they were right now?
I've talked to Margaret Rollinson at, at Trask. I don't know if you ended up reaching out to the principal at Noble?
I spoke to the principal at Noble during the legislative lunch, and he cannot accommodate any more children. But I think based on the fact that we have the ability to use several hundred students at the New Blair in combination with Wrightsville Beach, my impression was is they can make it work. It's gonna be a little bit difficult, and the difficulties that he has is the electives moving back and forth, but I think that he's working with administration on a plan.
And we're gonna keep some of the pods, trailers at different schools?
I think we talked about before, there's pods at Roland Grice and Myrtle Grove. Maybe the Myrtle Grove pods are supposed to go to Noble by November, Decemberish.
Does this involve trailer rentals?
Let's, Mr. Mr. Anderson, if we did nothing for next year, what would it look like in the middle schools?
Well, can I just get a clarification? Nothing, is that?
Not counting the forty, the Murray and Myrtle Grove, which you've already approved.
And not counting, I mean, we're not undoing what the board already voted on.
No.
Okay, so the current plan for our modulators, there are currently four eight-classroom modulators at Roland Grice. One of those was all, was scheduled to remain to replace the six single units. That stays the same. One of those was scheduled to go to Noble. That will not be needed. So we're gonna turn, we're gonna turn that one back in. However, we have in the capital outlay budget, a, the, a dollar amount to continue the lease on that unit for one year if you want to do that at Roland Grice. The other two would be turned back in as well. I'm sorry, one of those does go to, to Trask. There's two units at Myrtle Grove. There's a six-classroom modular building. That unit's a purchased building. We'll be moving that to Trask. There's a four-classroom modular building that we were moving to Noble. That unit is not needed. And so we're currently looking at relocating that to Veterans Park. The advantage of moving it there, as you know, this bubble has just started in our middle schools, but will eventually go through our high schools. So if we could come up with a solution at Veterans Park, we feel it's a good long-term solution and could be utilized by the middle school and the high school at different times.
You mean it would be kind of settled back and forth depending on where you need it?
We could, well, we wouldn't move the unit around. We may potentially locate it at, at Murray, allow veteran, or allow Ashley to use some additional space, or vice versa.
Okay, so flex space kind of-
Yeah, those buildings are so close that it-
Right.
Well, we got room for everybody if we don't redistrict.
If, we, we are fine for next year with what the board has already approved with high school and the, the one shift in our middle school districts.
But everybody needs to know.
Everybody has to know it's happening.
Next year.
It ha- the, the public needs to be aware, and we hear all the time that this is an issue where, oh, you don't have, you know, enough, you know, enough discussion, enough discussion. We'll come up, I think, with ways, or I will try to come up with ideas to make sure that everybody knows, and I'm sure we'll still get the same complaints, but, I mean, for the record, you can print it, you can write it, redistricting is going to happen. It has to happen. It is going to be painful for us, for the public, but at least you have some time to prepare.
And I would also say, I don't know, we're tabling it, you know, obviously we'll continue to talk about it and look where we're going, but this isn't necessarily mean that it's happening in the next year. I mean, it really depends on whether or not we decide, or, or, you know, the negotiations with the commissioners to talk about building a new middle school.
Right.
Because the last thing I think we would want to do is redistrict middle schools, and then in three years, or four years, have another middle school that's online and have to do it again. So it's a, it's a process that we need to keep aware of and keep talking about, but in terms of a definitive timeline, I don't know that we can give a definitive timeline, but it's coming. It's coming.
And let me assess it. Next year, we also do elementary?
And that'll kind of go hand in hand with, with middle schools. I, I think that it, again, depending on where we go with middle schools, the Williston proposal, possibility of building a new middle school, I think we have the ability to use some of the newly built elementary schools as possibly some places we can put middle school students until we're in a position that we can do a firm redistricting for, for the entire district.
Okay.
So you won't have, you can take a vacation, Eddie.
Well, I wish that was true. I would just also like to mention, as far as the elementary schools go, two things to keep in mind. We spent 15 months looking at middle and high schools and, and before we actually took a vote on it, to implement elementary redistricting for the 2021 school year, we need to do that one year from today. That's, because that's when the student assignments are going out. And if, and that's not, I, I think Mr. Wortman's exactly right. There's a lot of moving parts at this, at this time, and we may or may not need a full redistricting, but also keep in mind that Wrightsville Beach is moving to Blair. We're doing additions and renovations at Wrightsville Beach. When they move back to that school, the new school will not accommodate the current enrollment. So even without a full redistricting, we may have to make some minor shifts like we did at our middle school.
Is there any way we can do concurrent proposals? So if Williston doesn't go, that we can still be-
Sure.
Can we look at it as if, okay, here's the Williston option, here's what happens if for some reason Williston doesn't work out? Because I still think it's, you know, somewhat of a jump ball down there at Williston. So is there a way we can look at that?
There, I think just ensuring everyone that, you know, there'll be no further redistricting for next year is a, is a great first step. And then as we move forward with the Williston idea and a bond discussion for a new middle school, you know, there, there's some, there's some questions there that, that really have to be answered before we can put a timetable to any further redistricting.
But I would reiterate Mr. Anderson's point. Elementary reassignment happens a year from now. So that discussion needs to start soon. That's probably the best way to put it. And-
But again, I think that has to go hand in hand with middle school.
Yep.
Because in order to do elementary school, you have to do middle school because of the issues that, the overflow that we have at Noble. They're gonna be using some, a lot of space at Blair, so they have to go hand in hand. So we really need to decide how we're gonna move forward with, with a couple, as, as Mr. Anderson said, the Williston proposal as well as the bond, bond issues for the middle school.
It seems to me like we might need to have a, a hard out date on whether or not-
We've had hard outdates in the past.
For Williston, in terms of whether or not we're moving forward that way or the other way.
Yes.
It, well, I mean, I can tell you, from the committee's perspective, you know, the next one, we're gonna talk specifically about different ideas. I think we, if we, once we get some ideas to the table, we start to kind of, you know, kind of have that circle and now have dots within the circle of what we're looking at, so we'll see how we want to move forward when we, when we do that.
So would you say after the, maybe the next, with adding the Cape Fear component and then adding the Sea Tech component, the people with this next meeting, do you think that that would give you a little bit more concrete?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that it'll give us the, with, with every, with all the thoughts that the community has had, I think we're, the next meeting, we're, I think we're gonna have some specific thoughts about what, and correct me if I'm wrong, Stephanie, have some specific thoughts about maybe the way we would want a six through 12 school to look. Once we get that picture, then it's a decision of if we want to go that way, or if we want to keep it as a middle school. Is that, is that fairly accurate?
I would say that we should come up with multiple proposals and then turn it over to the community and see what their thoughts are. But at least two or three different options. And I think after this meeting, I think we're gonna have a more concrete idea of some of the ideas that people are bringing to the table. I know that we've been throwing around some, some pretty innovative and, and cool thoughts of new things that we could try. And, but again, it's going to be about respecting the community and the Williston community and, and also the history of the school, but making sure that we are academically supporting our children.
And that's what the, the intention was when we ended the meeting last, was to pretend that there was actually going to be a six, 12 school. Instead of have the discussion between this school versus that school, if there was a six, 12 school, what would you want it to look like? So once we come up with some ideas, and, and again, I think most of the ideas are really ideas that were kind of from, from things we've been hearing people talk about, and once we kind of get that idea together, you know, we certainly can have another, at that point, maybe we have a, a public forum or we have a workshop with the board that we can just sit down and say, hey, this is what we're looking at, introduce it at a workshop, then maybe have a couple, a public forum or two and talk about, give, let people have their ideas. And then, because ultimately, it's gonna be up to the board to make the decision of how we, we want to move forward.
Do you think, based on where we are right now, do you think it's possible that we could have a proposal for the next meeting?
No.
No, okay.
I think that we would-
Or proposals.
We'll talk about next, I, I, what I would like to do is, is at this next meeting, talk about some specific ideas. Then at that point, I think it's important maybe to have a workshop, and for us, you and I, to, to come in and say, hey, these are some of the ideas we looked at. What does the board think about it? Then develop that workshop into a proposal, have a couple, have a public forum to get people's thoughts about what we're looking at. And, and then I think is, is, is when we can at least say, this is what we're looking at.
I think that the, the Williston forum that was held was really successful, so I think if we could do it from various points, that we host one, and, you know, encouraging the community to come in, but I, I think if we could have Williston host another, that was fantastic. And, you know, the more, the more community feedback and input we get, the better.
Right, and, and again, I think it's also important to, it is, we're focusing on the specific Williston community, but at the same time, we're also, this is a New Hanover County school, so I think it is important to have a forum for the entire New Hanover County, so.
If we do, and I'd love to do the format they used at the, at the North Side meeting, and they had the Health Side meeting.
Oh, yeah.
It was a small roundtable discussions, I think you and Judy both facilitated us. That really, some folks don't want to get up and speak in front of a group, but in a, in a small roundtable setting, you can really dig into some of those ideas.
I love that. Yep.
So maybe let's figure out a date and have a workshop. Is that the first step in the process?
I think you gotta get to your next meeting and have some things to take to that workshop.
Okay, cool.
Now, get you back on track. You've got a motion still sitting up there.
I would, I would-
Oh, yeah.
Is there been a second?
I think there was a, who seconded it?
We do, we have first and second, okay. So all those in favor of tabling the, the, the remaining redistricting items that had been on the table before, not undoing what we had done before, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
I would just reiterate to, to public, so the Murray and Myrtle Grove moves are still in place, and all of the high school moves that were approved are still there.
That's correct.
Yes, okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
And thank you for proposing that, yeah, making that clear. Moving on to new business, item number 12. Item number A, June summer school proposal, appendix aye. Dr. LaShawn Smith?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. The Department of Public Instruction allows districts to offer June summer school, and as a part of that summer school session, students are able to test during the summer. They are able to test in areas for which they were not proficient. This does not add to the overall growth score of the school, but it does count in the overall proficiency of the school. Included in the information shared with you are the dates, and the assessments would be in English Language Arts for elementary schools, grades four through eighth, and then biology and English II for high school. Math, as Dr. Markley mentioned earlier today, is not available because it is being re-normed. So we would ask the board's approval for the proposal for New Hanover County Schools' summer school plan.
All right, you have heard the information. I would ask for a motion to approve item number A, the June summer school proposal.
No move.
That's a good question. This isn't required, is that correct?
No, this is optional for students. We will contact parents of students who score Level Two, and parents will make the decision as to whether they would like for their students to test after receiving additional instruction.
So will they be made aware that it is optional?
Very much so.
Okay.
Very much so.
And if they do well in this, does it over, it takes the place of what they got?
It, it does. It does show that they are now proficient within that grade level. And we had very impressive outcomes last year. That's why we're actually expanding to high schools this year to include them in the summer testing.
That's great.
All right, so we've had a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Item number B, disposal of surplus property, appendix J, Mary Hazel Small?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I request the board's approval to dispose of surplus property no longer necessary or desirable for public school purposes, to be disposed of in accordance with public school law. Contended on the board's approval, we will hold an auction on February 23rd at 10 o'clock.
We are required to read that every time we have surplus property. And for some of the, since this is the first time it's been on for some of the folks, can you just talk about that process a little?
Certainly. We, as, as schools determine that they don't need certain items, we first make them available to other schools, and then we, if they're not needed, or in many cases, some of the technology is no, no longer usable for us because the software we use won't work on the older technology, we bring those items to the board to approve. Upon approval, that we can surplus them, then we, there's several different ways that we can sell items during, approved by state law, but the, most of the time, we do it through public auction.
Is there, it seems like most of this stuff is technology. I know that this, all this goes back into the general fund. Is there ever any thought that we could divide it out to have it go back to the different departments it came from or the different schools it came from? I mean, it's probably not much, but-
The, the only time we do that, if it was purchased with a federal grant, we, we send the money back to the, we put it back with the grant. If the grant is, is finished, we send it back to the federal government. We also, anything sold for child nutrition goes back to child nutrition. The rest goes back to the general fund, just to be prioritized by the board.
We still have a zip from-
I don't think you're gonna get a lot of money on this sale.
I, I could get a report of what we've, the, the amounts that have been sold in the last year if the board's interested in that, and I can share with you.
Yeah, that would be interesting. I mean, 483 iPads.
That's what I thought.
I mean, that's, that's fairly significant.
If they're not usable for us, I don't know who else could-
You never know.
And what happens, those are very early addition of iPads, and they won't support new apps. So it's, it's not a case of we're just buying the newest and best. We have to be able to support it. And when you go into those old, older ones, there's no longer any support.
Correct. You can't put the, the latest version of the iOS on there, which means you can't run the latest version of the apps. And then some of the other websites that we use that are login-based accounts won't function on them either.
There are auctions coming two ways. We, you can come in and, on that one day in Tor, and we also do some online auctioning as well.
All right, so do I hear a motion to approve item number B, disposables, disposal of surplus property?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any discussions? Sorry.
No, typically this goes a whole lot faster, but since it's the first time through.
Yep. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Small. Item number 13, correspondence. Does any board member have any correspondence they would like to share?
I'd like to address correspondence and email that apparently went to the news within the last, last week. This email came from, allegedly came from Ms. Justice, and I don't know if she wants to address it, but the e- the email was-
Email.
I guess I would, it talks about our board members in some less than flattering ways. I guess, actually, to be honest with it, despicable ways. The email that, that I've heard directly, personally attacks some of our board members. I can tell you that I'm proud to serve with every one of these board members, Ms. Adams, Mr. Rivenbart, Nelson, Mr. Bowyer, Ms. Eastep, Ms. Nichols. The continued slandering by Judy in this community is appalling. Text messages, your text messages, you've said you haven't sent text messages.
No, I haven't.
Okay, so you've never sent text messages out, right?
I don't send texts, I don't text.
Okay, good. But the fact of the matter is-
I'm an old person.
She, she continues to slander our, our board, and it's really, it, it really, from a public perspective, hurts our entire board. I am, I'm, I'm shocked, disturbed, and disgusted by, by your continued actions. I'll be totally honest with you. They are extremely unbecoming of a board member, and I hope you realize that because you're not doing any, any service to our kids by, by continuing to do this.
First of all, I have no idea what email you're talking about. If you can present it to me, then I can respond.
Judy, you know your emails?
No, I haven't sent an email outside of-
I've read it, Judy.
Well, send it to me. I would like to see it.
You have it. It's on your private email.
You're the one who-
I don't have, I don't have it. I don't, I do not know what-
I can share it with you.
Let's not be, let's not continue to look at other board members and why.
Well, you show, just show it before you come-
No, you asked me to meet with you, to introduce yourself, and I met with you, and we had a very informal meeting.
Right.
And all of a sudden, I told you things that you sent to your fellow Democrats that I never mentioned. I knew nothing about some of the other board members.
Judy, Judy, let me ask you a question. Do you deny writing this email?
I don't-
Do you deny writing, I'm gonna let you know-
I have to see this email in order for you to talk about it, for me to respond to it.
Well, it is now public information.
And the news should have that next week, so you, you can explain yourself at that point.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Let, let me refresh your memory. How about the part about me being a dishwasher at a restaurant?
Well, show that and show-
Bruce, Bruce should have given me a job at the ABC store so I would look better to run for office. Remember that?
You remember that part? Or, or about-
And that, and that Charlie, his brother Charlie and I are neighbors.
Are you?
No, we're not.
Or the fact that I'm a, a money, money grubbing? Do you remember that part?
And then my, my husband and I gathered a bunch of real estate developers together to raise a bunch of money for, for Bill.
I mean, this is, this isn't even talking about all, all the other stuff you've said to this community.
I would like to see this email.
You have the email, Judy. Check your private email. You have the email. I don't want, you have the email. The fact of the matter is, it's really easy to sit on a computer and type things and tell people that you've never sent text messages before. You've never sent emails before about specific people.
I didn't say I didn't send email. I want to see the email you're referring to, and I don't, I literally don't text. I mean, I do text sometimes, like when somebody calls me and I call and they don't answer because they're texting generations, and I text them and say, call me.
Because we're all, I want to clarify the record, you've never texted anything about me, correct?
Not that I'm aware of, because I don't text.
That's all I need to know.
Well, we're gonna get it to you. I promise you that.
I would like to see what you're talking about.
Check your email, Judy.
I want to say this where it's on camera and everybody knows about it. I don't want- I don't want you, I don't want to have any more attacks from you about my family or my friends. I'm sick of it, I don't want to serve on any boards with you. I don't want to talk to you, don't even talk to me anymore. I've never been so embarrassed in my life as what you've done to me.
And Bill, I just want to tell you from, from my perspective, I, this didn't, this, this email, it, it means nothing to me. I know what type of person you are, I know that you own Rivenbart's. I used to go there when I was five or six years old to have, to have, to eat there for breakfast. I've known your family, it, it's, it's embarrassing that we actually have a board member that does this stuff.
And all the people, all the people that have seen it, that know me, know that it's a lot. So I'm not worried about it, it just didn't have to happen.
The point to me is, it doesn't matter if it's a lot or not, your path is your path. You are a fine individual, and I'm proud to be on the board with you, and I'm proud to be on the board with, with Stephanie, with Nelson, and with, with David and with Jeanette. I'm, I'm sorry that you feel this way about the other board members. But like I said, I would like, and I was hoping with the new board, that we would have some change and be able to move forward. This is not the way I wanted to start our, our time on the board. But I am hopeful that we can, as I've said to our other board members, I'm hopeful that we can get some, some great things done.
I think we can, sure.
Because we have that chance, we have that, we have that, we have that, that power and that role.
We have the, there's six people that we can, we can work with.
And we are already accomplishing some really, really great stuff. So I'm hoping that we can continue to move in that direction. But we, we need to stop all of the, all of the, the noise.
It's, it's embarrassing, and it's despicable, but it is what it is. That's all I have to talk about, about the correspondence.
Boy, do you have a, a different issue. I saw in the paper today, and I, I wasn't even aware of this issue, but C-Tech Athletics?
Yes?
I saw that article.
I didn't see that.
Is that something, we discussed, is that?
No, that was last year, we decided.
C-Tech plays sports at their home high schools. At some point in the future, if they get large enough that they could field their own teams, that's a conversation we'll have.
C-Tech whales.
Whales?
Well, it's sea, sea dragons, how about seahorses?
Sea dragons, it's already done.
So, I think we got a, I'm from the, for New England folks, you've heard the expression, I think we got a little, a little ahead of our skis there.
I didn't see the article, what, what was there?
It was just, hey, next up for C-Tech Athletics, I don't know.
It basically said, it talked about, it's either Laney or your home high school.
Correct.
And then also, I mean.
We have talked about down the road, if they get up to.
Five, six hundred people, specific sports, I don't think we do everything.
Well, you know, we're limited because of the fact that we're a cooperative innovative high school, but when we get out to, to St. Barry Road, you know, we are planning on growing, so you never know what can happen.
Not, not next year.
Yes.
I was also, I'm sorry, did you have some? I was also, you'd mentioned in our weekly correspondence about teacher pay and teacher compensation. I didn't know if that is a conversation that we would begin here, beginning budgeting.
It's part of budget season, but I am very interested in your thoughts, particularly around veteran teachers, because we know, if you look at pay over the last several years, we've front-loaded the schedule, but we haven't done anything at the back end of the schedule, or as much as we could, we could. So there's some things to look at heading into budget season, and I think it's a good conversation to have.
Has there been anything on the state level? Because I know that Governor Cooper brought that up, but I don't know if there's anything from the Senator, the House.
That's what we're all going to wait for. We, the governor typically does his budget first, and in the past, that's been an exercise in paper writing. But now that there's no more override on vetoes, it should be an interesting thing to follow. If you've been, this is long session, I have seen long sessions go all the way to October. I've seen long sessions that have ended up before the end of June, which is their statutory deadlines. But once we have the Senate and House proposals and the governor, we can get a better idea, and that should be coming hopefully February, March. What I have heard is nothing around teacher, I, I've heard rumors of big teacher pay raises, but until I see what the proposal looks like, it's hard for us to, to gauge. Mary Hazel, are you hearing anything from your financial folks?
Not yet, we'll have our conference the week before the budget work session, and we usually get a legislative update at that conference if there's any news. So I'll bring back any, anything I hear to the board at your next work, work session.
But assuming there's a, a raise, I'd be interested in what the board thinks about where we should go with that, because that would have to be a county request and not a, obviously, because it would come out of local funding. So we have a, a fixed supplement, so the county has asked us how much it would cost to increase supplement on average about one percent, and we gave them that number. I've also heard discussion about hard to fill areas like special ed. We've got, if we look at vacancies, special ed is typically the vacancy we have the one most often. So if you want to look at targeted supplements, those are some things to look at. I'm looking forward to those discussions.
All right, item number fourteen, announcements. Item A, the New Hanover County Board of Education will participate in, in school tours on Friday, February eighth, two thousand nineteen, at two P.M. The tour will begin at Blair Elementary School, and I'm assuming we'll end at College Park.
Correct.
Okay.
I may meet you there.
Okay.
It's my birthday, bring cupcakes.
All right. I've been watching the Great British Baking Show, I'm sure they'll be great. Item number B, the New Hanover County Board of Education will attend the New Hanover County Schools' Rookie of the Year banquet on Tuesday, February nineteenth at noon. The venue is Cape Fear Country Club. Item number C, the New Hanover County Board of Education will hold a budget work session on Tuesday, February twenty-sixth at four P.M. at Holly Tree Elementary School. And the next, item number D, the next regular meeting of the Board of Ed is scheduled for Tuesday, March fifth, which is my birthday, and I don't eat cupcakes, sorry, at five thirty at the Board of Ed Center.
We also have a Williston committee meeting on Thursday, three o'clock, the Board of Ed.
Wait, I'm sorry, when is that?
Thursday at three o'clock at the Board of Ed, I just want to mention that.
This Thursday?
Yes.
We'll have a policy committee meeting before the March, right before the March, five-thirty meeting. So that'll be posted as well.
And I think we've all been invited to the communities and schools.
Yes.
Breakfast, that is also the opening date for the Miracle League, which I'm not sure exactly what time that is yet, so that's, that's the same date, that's going to be a busy day.
Yeah, that's usually at Olson Park.
Yeah.
What day was it?
March fifth. So item number fifteen, closed session, do we know what?
Yeah, we have a, two.
Two, okay.
One personnel, and then Eddie's got an update on some land issues.
Okay, so do, I don't know the statute.
Madam Chair, the, the statutory sites are one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A, subsections five and six, for personnel and land acquisition.
Okay, all right, so moved, you go into closed session, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You are in closed session.